Stand by to launch FanStream Sports.
Three, two, one.
Let's start.
Hello, sports fans. Welcome to FanStream Sports. Nothing, nothing but pure sports. This is the JP Show.
JP, it's so good to hear you back on the air.
Stand by now. Here's JP.
What is up, Petermans? It's the JP Peterson Show. I am not JP Peterson. Uh, I am Indy Cart Tim, JP's faithful, illustrious, legendary, dare I say, co-host. Uh, it is Friday. It is a Friday, July 18th episode of the JP Peterson Show, which means, boys and girls, being July 18th, if you have been a longtime listener, first time caller of the JP Peterson Show, it's JP's birthday today. And JP refuses to go on the air on his birthday. I, I don't know. Is that a religious thing? Um, I don't know, or a lazy thing? Religious or lazy that JP doesn't like to work on his birthday? Huh? Something to ponder for the rest of this show. It is not going to be your regular show, boys and girls. I am not here with you for the next two hours talking Tampa sports and all that that entails. Rather, we are offering you a best of the week for JP. We're going to throw out our interview with uh, the great MLB analyst broadcaster, Hall of Famer, and JP's uh noted fantasy football rival, uh, John Smoltz. We're gonna throw Smoltz out there. We are going to replay the interview that JP did with Ken Hagan, Hillsborough County Commissioner, discussing some latest updates on the Rays' sale. We're gonna offer that for you. Uh, and then we're gonna replay JP's uh, our, our interview we did with Brian Hodgson, new USF men's basketball coach. It was a great, great interview. We got into some detail about their recruiting process, about how they, how his staff, I guess, you know, convinces guys. That's what recruitment is. It's a convincing process. And they've got quite a process that they go through that was completely off the radar for me and JP both. We were both flabbergasted by it. Um, so we're gonna play those for you. Uh, we appreciate you very much tuning in. Uh, feel free to comment. We will, well, he won't be. He'll probably be still asleep by the time you guys are seeing this. I will be monitoring the uh, you Petermans out there in your, your comments in the comment section, and we will be discussing those on Monday as you will get me for the full five days next week. Uh, Nick will be out on Monday, so you get me Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. My apologies in advance. It's a whole lot of this going on next week, but that's what you get with it. So uh, if you're a fan of that, then congratulations. And if you're not, then F you, F you, F you, and F you. I'm not gonna go have a Guinness. Uh, but anyway, let's get into today's show. Appreciate everybody tuning in, tuning in. Sorry it's not live. Look, it was JP's idea, not mine. It's his birthday. And what JP wants on his birthday, JP gets. Uh, so without further ado, let's launch off and let's start with uh, some Smoltz right here on the JP Peterson Show on FanStream Sports, Tampa Bay.
All right. Um, speaking of gambling, let's uh, head on out to Lake Tahoe, where the uh, American Century Celebrity Classic is going on, the five to one favorite. And he's a Hall of Famer.
Put money on that.
Our World Series champion, most famously known as the man who finished second in the media division last year. The great John Smoltz. I finally beat him. What's up, Smoltz? How are you?
I'm doing great. This is a perfect place, perfect timing. And one more thing left on my bucket list. I, I, I have to host the trophy. I gotta win. I'll be the oldest guy. I'll be the oldest guy to ever win.
So the hips are good? We had both hips replaced, right?
Yep. Both hips are replaced and um, it's the strongest I've been coming in, but that doesn't mean anything if I don't make putts. And so I'm working really hard on uh, making putts. That's what it comes down to.
Now, who's your chief competition?
Marty Fish is.
Marty Fish, Tampa's own.
Yeah, he, he is as good as it gets. Um, I'm hoping the wind blows because he hits a majestic, pretty ball.
Oh, yeah.
I soft. I hope it blows.
I think I played golf with him once, like many years ago, and he was just a stick, like really, really good.
He is. He's, he's the um, pretty much the best we've got along with, you know, there's so many guys now that are competing at a high level. Celebrity golf has definitely
Yeah.
gone to, gone to the next level.
Yeah. You don't think you missed your window?
My biological clock is ticking, yeah.
They're getting better and you're getting older. That's what we're saying here. Like this is the time.
That's exactly right. Yeah.
Right. But you feel good. Well, we're, so we already made a bet here. What we're going to, we're all of the uh, the commenters, all the Petermans, as we call them, uh, the huge crowd that watches this show each and every day, the millions, they're gonna bet on you.
Okay.
So if you win, when you come here to do the World Series game, it's time for Wow. Throw you a huge tailgate party and you're gonna bring the trophy. All right, fair?
Yes, absolutely. That's a promise.
All right. Speaking of that.
Good enough.
Any chance the Rays will be hosting games in Steinbruner Field in the postseason?
Isn't this unbelievable? Um, it really is. Uh, the season has been a strange season. It's a streaky season. Teams were in great position, then they find themselves out of it, injuries, all the different things. You look across baseball and there hasn't been one team other than the Detroit Tigers. What if I told you the Detroit Tigers would have the biggest lead at the All-Star break, the best record in baseball? You'd say, okay, Smoltz finally is losing it, you know, he's out, you know? And that's exactly what's happened. And the Dodgers, they're on a six-game losing streak. The Yankees went through a seven, eight-game losing streak. Toronto on fire, Tampa was on fire. There's a lot of things in the game that show how even though you on paper have the maybe most money, best roster, if you're not healthy and you're not playing the right kind of baseball at the right time, you're, you're vulnerable. So the Rays, I, I honestly, I always felt like there was a little bit of an advantage for them in the dome in this regard. It was a tough place to play. Um, you never got anything rained out. You always were gonna take your batting practice, but what they've shown is they need to be outdoors. They have been unbelievably offensively. Of course, that park and the wind and taking advantage of that has really given them a boost because offensively, they not, they weren't the same team in the dome. For whatever reason, they just, they weren't. They, they pitched, they defend, they ran, but offensively, they, they ran into their issues. So it's an incredible, um, I, I say it a lot and, and a lot of, a lot of stuff in baseball is eye wash when it comes to all the information and analytics. They want everybody to believe that, that, you know, they have the greatest answers to everything, but I do have to give the Rays, they're probably the top um, of what it, what it means to really make the most out of their locker room, their roster. Uh, they have the same problem. They get a lot of guys injured. But I gotta give them credit. A lot of other organizations, they use it as a, as a shell game to confuse their fans. Um, you know, they don't want them to really know what's going on. The Rays, to me, um, are way above that. And um, they're showing a year in and you're out. You just, you can't count them out.
You know, it's interesting, John, is that there's a uh, it's an excellent chance that there's gonna be new ownership here in the next couple of months. And it's a group. I know who these people are. You know some of them. Actually, we can't say who they are.
Yeah.
You know some of them. Uh, and they're, you know, they've told me that they're going to add payroll. I don't, you know, I don't know how much. I don't know what the number is, but it's gonna be, get them closer to the league average of 150, somewhere around there, which they've always been around 80, 90 million. So that would be the difference in adding, say, a Ronald Acuna, who at 17 million for the next three years, something that this ownership group would never add. Uh, the new ownership group might. They just made a move to get Brian Baker um, from uh, the Orioles, uh, which is right-hand pitcher, strikeout artist in the back. They needed that for their bullpen. And now I think they need a power-reading outfielder. If they were able to do something like this, I think they're a legitimate World Series contender if they add another big bat. What do you think?
I think they've always been in this spot where there could be a World Series contender. They just haven't had the resources or the want to at that point um, to maybe sacrifice, let's just say, four more years of consistent competitive baseball to pouring it into really putting a run um, to win a championship. Now, the flaws that come with some of the things that they deal with um, allow them to be more competitive over a 10-year period, which is proven versus really pouring in to try to get a better edge and winning a World Series. They have to equate who they're playing against and what that, that value added would be, right? I get all that. And then if they feel like they have the rosters, let's just say the Dodgers are the Dodgers and they're completely healthy and they're gonna represent the Philly, the, the, the National League. But then you have to make a, a assessment in your own league. Can you get to that World Series, which would give you so much bang for your buck, even if you don't win it? Um, I think that's what they're, where they're at right now, and they have to make those tough decisions. Other clubs are never willing to make them. Uh, you, they just never are. It's, it, they make their fans believe that, hey, we're close. We could do this and we're out for this guy. It never, it's never gonna happen. So the Rays and everything that has been jumbled up and has gone against them, and there's been a lot of things going against them. Their young, great shortstop, franchise player gets, happens to what happens to him, the stadium, the, all the thing, like you can't make this up and still to sustain and, and, and have a competitive team, you know, although be it in a Yankees stadium and spring training. It's a great story. I, I just think, I, I don't think people understand what the mindset of players are like when all these things can be thrown at you and, and your creatures have had it. I don't think people understand. It's not that easy.
And how much crazier would that be if the Yankees ended up being one of their postseason opponents? Playing at their spring training park?
Uh, I'm telling you, don't think the networks aren't thinking about some of these things that, that possibly happen. Right now, all of a sudden, Toronto is in the mix and they're, they're playing lights out. There's a lot of things in the American League that may not go the way we thought they're gonna go. Um, the Houston Astros were not supposed to be where they're at and they were just, until recently, just on, on fire. And again, Detroit is not a fluke. So the American League is very competitive. There may not be a, a standout team at all, like there may be in the National League. There's probably three really, really good standout teams in the National League. The powers kind of shifted over there, but then they're showing again. They're showing the weaknesses of teams having ups and downs. In, in baseball, to me, when you architect your team in spring training, you hope that everything goes a certain way. And if you've got backup plans and depth like the Dodgers do, you can sustain the 14 guys that are on the IL pitching-wise. That's insane. But at some point, baseball's gotta start considering the value of health is like making three more moves at the trade deadline.
Yeah.
I don't think people understand that. They're not taking the value of health and using it as a competitive advantage. They just think they can use the next person, next guy up. They just act as if this is going to happen and there's nothing we can do about it. So let's just kind of keep dealing with the cards that we're dealt. I, I just don't understand why a team hasn't taken that next big step. And you can say analytically, um, to have that competitive advantage. You know, when this whole run started with information, teams probably had a separation of 10 to 20% advantage over the next teams. Now that, that spread can't be what, three to 5%? Maybe?
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe? So no one's, no one's, you know, someone's got a zig when everyone else is zagging and, and, and I'm interested to see who that's going to be. I know there's teams doing it. San Francisco with the new philosophy of a Posey and getting the pitchers to go deeper and Kansas City starting to do some thing. You're starting to see a small, but, but the reality of, of why this would take a little bit longer than people want it to, they're into instant success and not any long-term kind of value. And so competitively, I think the teams that stay healthier, you watch. That's gonna be a huge thing in the future.
You're talking, and you're talking mostly about the pitchers.
Yeah.
Build them up.
Yeah. This has been going on. They tore it down 10 years ago. They thought they were so smart that they were gonna eliminate starting pitching and bullpen the heck out of everybody. And then the one thing, and again, I get, I get criticized all the time about being anti-analytics. That is not me. I'm not anti-analytics at all. But what I am anti is never admitting when you're wrong.
Right, right.
You know, to me, that's, that's the greatest example of why the arrogance of either not knowing something or thinking you know everything. You have to be able to say, we were wrong and shift. You know what the Rays have done? They've done that. They admitted it without even maybe always saying it out loud. They've admitted it with their strategic changes and allowing the process and whatever algorithm they have to be manipulated so that it works better for them. And, and again, that's, that's, that's value. That's being smart. And, but when you stick to your guns and you think that's the only way to do things, I mean, we've been talking about this for 10 years and you know what? It, it gets old when, when people just wanna turn their head and just act like it's never been a, an issue and, and never wanna deal with it. And, and I think certain clubs are starting to realize that and adapting.
Yeah. Marrying the old and the new is where it's all about. And, and this, you know, using the, the great baseball knowledge that has, you know, been cured over 100-plus years and with analytics. And zigging when they, I love that comment because the Rays have done that in terms of their speed. They've gone from, so many teams just wanted to add power hitters and launch angle and all that. The Rays have gone the other way now and, and added Chandler Simpson is, is the next Vince Coleman. I mean, I love this kid. Love. I wish the, the Rays would stick him at the top of the lineup and just leave him there. And uh, their speed with Mangum, their, their infield hit, hell, they're even bunting this year, Smoltz. I never, never thought Cash would ever do that. And they're, they're playing small ball and they're mixing in. They've got such a great athletic team. I think they're just one big experienced bopper away, but I love this new kind of approach that they've taken offensively. What's your thoughts?
No doubt. Um, look, the, the baseball players in that locker room are anxiously awaiting. See, here's what happens every year. Players know if they put their team in position to put pressure on their management, that at the All-Star break, it starts getting to the point like, who are we gonna add? Where's that adrenaline jolt? We're good. We know we're good. We can compete even if we don't make a move, but there's a reality that every player is sitting there waiting and knowing they might lose somebody that's been a part of the club, but that they're gonna gain somebody that's gonna put them over the edge and it's gonna take them to the next level. We were part of that for 14 years. We were not supposed to be there that long, but every time we were in position, management had pressure on them to make moves to get us a little bit better, even if we weren't expected. And so that's where everybody's at. The problem is baseball and, and some of those teams, there's not a lot out there. So there might be a heavy price and you gotta, you gotta strike first. To me, the longer you wait, the harder it gets. You're waiting for some of those teams that were supposed to be good to fall out of the race so that you can cherry pick some of those players. Uh, to me, uh, what, what happened in San Francisco and Boston is one of the most unique trades we'll ever, ever, ever see because of the dynamics that played into it. But something like that, somebody jump-starting something they didn't see and going to get that guy right now or before the pressure of the deadline comes, I think is, is going, but I'm interested to see who's gonna do that.
Would the Braves trade Acuna, you think, or no?
Braves are in a tough spot right now and that's, look, they've had a great run and I'm not saying it's over, but they signed a lot of young players to a lot of years and that 2023 offense that spoiled everybody historically has not even come close. Guys are underperforming. So you take the, the, you either gotta bite bullet and just say, this is, we're not, this, we just didn't produce. We, we think they're going to next year and you keep everything the same. You can't chase anything right now. But someone would have to blow you out of the water to be dynamically different to, to kind of change the fan base in Atlanta
Mm-hmm.
Um, with, with the excitement they once had. So it's been a miserable year in every facet. This is a very good um, roster when healthy, decimated at the pitching front. Um, their starters, you couldn't, you couldn't put three worst scenarios together for any team. And so it's gonna be interesting seeing what they do. They, that.
The Rays could trade a couple, maybe definitely one young starter. Shane Baz has been mentioned, you know, Taj Bradley. Uh, these guys have tremendous stuff. They're not finished products yet, but they're really young, tremendous stuff.
I think if I'm, again, you know, everyone loves to play that uh, spend someone else's money.
Hell, yeah.
But I'm telling you, I would make it so tough if it's even a scenario with the Braves to make them turn it down. I, I would make it, I would make it so tough to get an impact player that is under control. And again, it just might all be pie in the sky, but why not? Why not try to, to, you know, check those tires on another team and say if they're willing, you know, that, that, to me is, is what it's all about. You're in that position. And if you feel like literally the leverage and the added value of who you're gonna get not only secures the playoffs, but puts you in an elite company and you become the favorite, that's a move you gotta really think about pulling off.
Are you concerned about Acuna's two knee surgeries? Is he washed or is that just bad luck and he's got a lot of good years left?
I think uh, overcoming one is unbelievable. Overcoming two does put that little bit of a question, but he is such an elite athlete and has shown that he can definitely come back from that. Um, I'm more shocked that not from the running standpoint, but the instant success he's had after a second one tells me that he's, he's
Good.
That would be uh, not a worry. The problem I have with, with baseball and their decisions on young players is they think they're gonna hit on every one of them and they're on their contracts. And we know that's not even close to true.
Right.
But at some point, there'll be some elite guys that you know, you're not really rolling the dice with. If, especially if the character is, I got my money and it's not gonna water down what I do. I still wanna be great. That's the thing people don't understand. They think every contract, every player has that mentality. And it, they don't. So um, I think he's, he's definitely proven to me that his bounce back and his ability to still be great, um, this answers it the second time through.
Yeah. Uh, before I let you go, and I kind of alluded to this early on, you know, the Major League Baseball's talking about, hey, if the Rays get to the playoffs, we could do division series in that stadium and do wild card series, but we can't do ALCS. We can't do World Series. If this team gets there and Major League Baseball takes it away from these fans, uh, I don't know. That, I don't know if it's a good league for Ma, good luck for Major League Baseball. I know everybody says, well, there's a lot of money that's tied to it in terms of ticket sales that you can't get there. And I'm like, hey, we'll sell tickets at Raymond James next door for a watch party. I don't, we'll figure it out. We'll figure it out. But uh, I don't know. It just feels like a bad look to, hey, we're moving you guys to Miami. I don't know.
I, I hope, yeah, you're, you're, that, there may not be a hotter subject to talk about come September. And a lot of fingers crossed.
Yeah.
In Park Avenue, so that there is not that reality.
Make that decision.
That's a tough, that's a tough call. And I totally get where you got. If I'm a player, first of all, um, I'd be ticked, right? If we're having success.
Oh, hell, yeah.
I get the dynamics. Trust me, I'm on the other side.
I know. I know you are.
Totally get it. Um, we've had some unique situations play out over the last five years through COVID, through storms, through all kinds of things and always it's been amazing. It's, I've been amazed on how many players and teams have persevered.
Yeah.
From Toronto not having a home, from the Rays to, you know, hurricanes. I mean, there always seems to be a way to adjust and adapt. And I've been, I've been, I can very easily make a case for why you could come up with a lot of excuses for some of those teams to say why they shouldn't have won. And, and, and nobody did. It's, it's impressive to me. And the Rays right now, even though it's a, it's impressive to me. It's, they're still in their state, but they're not in their environment. It's totally different. And they've adapted well and, and, you know, I still think they'll adapt whatever the situation calls for at the end.
New ownership in a stadium in Tampa? Total game changer, don't you think? You've lived here, you know this area.
Listen, you know how I feel about Tampa and how I feel about what would be the most impactful situation for a lot of people who have been sitting on their hands, waiting for something good to happen and reward that city. Hopefully it all gets worked out. Baseball's in a strange place with trying to add two more teams, trying to get to that level of where the athletes and the development of young players has been at an all-time high. Um, but there are some things they gotta work out and they gotta get fixed and, and that's one of them. And there's no doubt. Um, that city, which you think about it, what, how many years ago hadn't had any championships?
Yeah.
And has become such a, a sports city.
Tampa Bay.
In such a short period of time. It's, it, it would just fit the mold. I, I think you could make an argument that other teams in other places need to go first.
Yeah, absolutely.
Before the Rays even think about going anywhere.
Now, we, we just gotta do it right. And, you know, and real quick, salary cap, salary floor, and, and we, we know, we got labor coming up in this offseason. Could be a lockout. Should the Players Association finally really look at this? Cause you know, overall, the money could be the same to the players, but I think in, in terms of baseball surviving and being more popular, they need this. They gotta have it.
The, the problem is, without getting too deep into the weeds, because I haven't been that involved in it anymore, um, there's a generational philosophy change. The game's so young that players have different, they have different ideas, or maybe they think differently than the generation before them that really was thinking collectively as the whole.
Yeah.
And I'm not saying all of them think this way, but give it to me now and I want mine now, right now.
Right.
And, and that's kind of the philosophy that is, it's kind of shifted why they've made some, in my opinion, some mistakes. There's some discontent, to say the least, between the two sides. It would be hard pressed for me to think there's not gonna be an interruption. I hope I'm wrong. I hope that it is, it has found a way to, to bridge that gap. There's all kinds of suggestions, but when you have this entity of ownerships and the way that things are created, it's not easy to get the fix. It's not like you could just go to court and, and somebody decides on your fate one way or the other. That's never, that can't happen. So it has to come down to negotiations and some form of an agreement and a change in some form of the philosophy that has been going forward on both sides. Because everyone brings up great points and, but nobody is not dealing with the system that's, that's there. So you can't complain about teams that are not doing what they say they're supposed to be doing because it's an ownership's decision to do however they wanna run their business.
Yeah.
So it's a very tough, um, and when you try to take time to explain it to people, they don't underst, it's not apples and, it's apples and oranges. You can't take a business and, and apply the same principles that you would in the business world to baseball. It's totally different. And that's where it gets kind of frustrating for people.
Very true. All right. The Smoltz Championship Boat Parade is on. If you win it, we're having it right here in Tampa when you come for the playoffs, partner. Cannot wait.
I got, I got the American League this year, so um, I'm, I'm looking forward to it.
All right. Awesome. Thanks, Johnny. Good luck this weekend. Have fun.
Thanks, guys.
Right. Great John Smoltz right there. Um, fabulous interview. He's just the best in the business and a great friend of the program. We thank him so much for taking.
Should've had him on much earlier in the show because I have so many questions for him.
I know. I know. Well, he had, he had other things to do and he's out on the West Coast.
This is us, all right? This is us.
Here we go. Let's welcome in the great Ken Hagan, Hillsborough County Commissioner. There he is. It's a momentous day, my friend. The Rays are being sold. This is, when Ken Rosenthal said, well, JP Peterson says it, I get it. But when Ken Rosenthal and Evan Drelig say it, then confirm my reporting, it's a done deal. Welcome to the show, my friend.
Hey, thanks, buddy. First of all, you're killing me with the Guido chain line there. That was, yeah.
You got one, don't you?
Bad, bad memories. I, I know if I do, I, I'm quite certain you do as well.
Oh, hell, yes. Italian horn.
Maybe he's still wearing his.
Yeah. Yeah. Oh, God, yes. It was, I, I used to work as a lifeguard on a water slide. And, you know, I'd have to clean out the filter every now and then. It was a gold mine. It's a complete gold mine. Yeah. My girlfriend, my girlfriend had the best jewelry and my mom in, in all of Hollywood, Florida. It's fantastic. Anyway, uh, but that's not why we're here. Um, so the Rays apparently looks like they have been sold. Um, and we've been talking about this obviously for a long, long time. And what, what, obviously you've come on this program weeks ago and said, you're very confident you can get a deal done. That's what people wanna know. Kent, where's the stadium gonna be? Hillsborough County have money. What do you know about this group? I know we've talked about this before, but let's refresh everybody.
Well, a couple of things. First of all, you mentioned how Ken Rosenthal certainly has street cred, if you will, but uh, I wanna say, no one's fought this fight harder than you over the last 15 years and
Thank you, sir.
Certainly, uh, when you say it, you can, you do your due diligence, you do your homework as well as anybody or better than anybody. So I appreciate everything you've done um, throughout this process. So.
Thank you for that. I mean, we've, we got a lot of boots on the ground here. I've been here a long time. A lot of, I know a lot of rich people. And uh, so it's, yeah, it's, it's been, it's been a fun, it's been a fun ride and, you know, we take, we've taken our shots together. But it looks like this is finally gonna be, come to fruition.
Yes, sir. Very well, very well stated. Um, first of all, again, I'm very, very pleased and encouraged by yesterday's announcement. It is consistent with what both Commissioner Manfred and the new ownership group had indicated to me. And um, I just assured them that once the sale uh, is consummated, that our team will be prepared uh, to sit down and, you know, begin having a, a serious discussion on, you know, the, the ownership group's goals and plans and, and what they would like to see. But um, we're gonna be ready. And I'm, I'm very encouraged with, with this group and um, let, let's, you know, let's get the deal done.
Yeah. And, and everybody wants to know who the Tampa Bay elite businessmen are, and I've been sworn to secrecy. Um, I know you have as well. So in time, this is gonna come out, right? I mean, at some point, this, this will all come out. All the owners will be named and we, can we characterize it as, these are well-known people that And we can we characterize it as these are well known people that 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 the city will trust as opposed to the last ownership group, that the fans will trust, that that the voters can get behind. And now this is not going to be, you know, tax money, property tax money, but that the voters, that you're you're a politician, you're going to give money, you need a return on investment, right? And that's what you have to show, show the folks and the folks need to be invested in the ownership group.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And I've consistently stated for 15 years that I've been, you know, through this journey, that protecting the taxpayers is paramount and we're we're going to do that. That being said, you brought up a good point. When I last met with Commissioner Manfred, I I shared with him that I was supremely confident. I might have even said that on your show.
You did.
That if we had an opportunity to sit down with an ownership group that had significant local ties, because how important that is to have folks here that the community knows, the electeds know and trust, that we would be able to reach a deal. And that's because of having that local tie in, if if you will. Again, I didn't know Patrick before. I I certainly like the fact that we're both Gators because he's a University of Florida trustee and candidly, when when we did meet, we over half the time was talking about UF. And, you know, and about the school and what they're going through now and the presidential search and all that stuff. But but the fact that we do have a local component, significant local component, certainly will make it much easier to come up with it with an agreement.
Can you give us any type of indication of where the money's going to come from? We talked about the sits last time you were on. How does that play in this time where it didn't play in last time with the Rays?
Well, that's a good point and one that I shared, again, both with Commissioner Manfred and with the new ownership group, that we would pick up where we left off with the last discussion we had with the Rays and our financial model. But we do have the benefit of the the sits, as you would say, being renewed. And that that offers a potential additional revenue source for at a minimum infrastructure. Now, how much, where, those kind of things, you know, too soon to tell, if you will, but that wasn't available last time. And so anything that can be counted on our side of the ledger, even if it's for a parking garage or for infrastructure that's used beyond just for the ballpark, is something that for most folks is politically palatable, even for, I would suggest even for Governor Sanders.
Yeah.
Last time I spoke about him, the last time I spoke with him, he was very clear that he would not support taxpayer money to build a stadium. But that for infrastructure, something that he could certainly certainly consider. And I believe.
Significant, right? And that because that then you can move your money to the stadium if he's taking care of infrastructure.
And you probably know this better than me, but I believe there was funding in this year's budget for USF for infrastructure. Not again, not to go vertical for their new stadium, but for infrastructure supporting it, because there's a valid basis, not just for people to go to USA football games, but it helps to improve the infrastructure and the accessibility all around the ballpark. And that's why most folks, not everyone, there's always going to be people that push back and are going to oppose anything and everything. But the fact that we can improve the area beyond just for those that attend a baseball game or football game, for most folks is is politically palatable.
Ken Hagan joining us, Hillsborough County Commission. Jane Castor, Mayor of Tampa, has been much more vocal, to me, it seems, this time around. She seems very confident that this can get done. Where does the city, how do they play into this? Can they, can they add some money to the ledger?
Well, I think the most important thing, and it's what I learned very early on, when I studied, when I started going down this journey and studying previous ballpark efforts in other communities, that it was, it was truly critical to have the buy in of all of the jurisdictions, if you will, for the city, the county, the sports authority, because those are the three entities, at the end of the day, that'll be voting on any type of ballpark. And so our team consists of myself, Mayor Castor, Eric Hart, CEO of the Sports Authority, Bonnie Wise, County Administrator, and John Bennett, the the city of Tampa, the mayor's chief of staff. And so we are, we are one team. We work together. It's not one trying to up the other. We're all reading from the same hymn book, if you will. And so that that's a, that's a benefit. I know Miami had challenges with that many moons ago, building their ballpark. And I wanted to ensure that, you know, that wasn't going to take place this time around. But the mayor is fully supportive of this effort. Again, it goes beyond just the mayor, involves city council, with the county commission. It goes way beyond me. At the end of the day, it requires four votes of both bodies. And what would, what would likely be the scenario as what we've done with renovation agreements to Emily Arena and Raymond James in the past is assuming we can get to an understanding or a term sheet, we would, one week, we would have three votes. The Sports Authority meets on on Tuesday afternoon, County Commission meets Wednesday morning, City City Council meets Thursday morning. So it'd be a series of votes, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, that would, is how it would play out in all likelihood.
Do you have any idea what the numbers might be? It's my understanding that this group has some deep pockets and they want to do developments and around it, which obviously developers will will pay a portion of it. And there can be some special taxing districts, right? If it's in the city. Tell me a little bit about how that, and that helps pay over time, correct? Kind of pay as you go.
Accurate. Unfortunately, I I'm not, I don't have any specificity as far as exact numbers.
Right.
I did confirm with the new ownership group that development will be a part of the of the deal. And it frankly, it has to be unless you're insanely wealthy and have the ability to come in and bankroll a $2 billion ballpark and and increase your payroll and do all the things that you have to do, which is highly unlikely, really doesn't exist in in today's environment. You're going to need those creative financial sources in order to make the numbers work. And so development is going to be a part of the deal irrespective of the particular location. So confirm that with with Patrick. And so, again, our model was heavily user fee based. It was heavily based on tourist tax dollars, on CRA dollars that can only be used in a certain specific area, creating a CDD, which where essentially the property owners are taxing themselves. It's not relying on general revenue or property tax dollars to to finance the ballpark. And so I've always told folks that the devil's in the details. And at the end of the day, if it's a, if it's a raw deal, if it doesn't protect taxpayers, I'll be the first one to vote against it. And it won't get support, but I'm confident that with this group that we can come to an agreement that's a win win.
Yes.
The organization and team, but also for the taxpayers of Hillsborough County and the city of Tampa.
And I think that's what we've said, and we got a lot of new viewers, so maybe they're not aware of this, but we've been talking about this since the the Tampa original deal. And then the St. Pete deal and other deals have been talked about. And and you look around the country and and Tim can chime in here if he wants about Texas. They build stadiums every week. You have to, if you have willing ownership and you have willing municipalities that know what they're doing, these things can come together rather quickly and they can come together very well, but you have to have them working together. And that's never been the situation with Stu Sternberg. It's always been this, you know, and so this, this is what's going to make this deal so much easier.
Anytime we build a Starbucks in Dallas, they have to build a stadium next to it. Hey, I'm I'm jealous. I'm Indians. I've been to Globe Life. I've been to the the other ballpark there that's still there.
Yeah.
Using it for rodeos or something. I don't know. But no, but they have a wonderful model, as does with their Texas Live.
Yeah, Atlanta as well.
I was out there for the World Series and you go into the restaurants there and you, you know, you have dinner, buy a couple beers, you get your bill. I don't remember the exact percentage, but a percentage goes toward paying for the ballpark. Atlanta, again, and you're well aware of the Atlanta situation with the battery there that they've tripled their tax base and all the revenues that come in. But that was, that was just an example of how the Braves led the process. They came forward with their commitment. They brokered that deal in three months.
Yeah. Two and a half. Atlanta, when it happened, we, we, we broke the story on our more on our morning show. Nobody knew. Nobody knew.
Two and I mean, they were, I mean, I, I, the CEO of the Braves, Terry McGurk, walked me through the entire process. I mean, they had code names and and different words they were using. But two and a half years later, they were playing ball.
Yeah.
Thank you. We've been on this journey for 15 years, but that's because the current ownership group refused to lead. They always wanted the business leaders and the political leaders to lead the process when it's no, this should be a group effort and you need to be at the table. And for many years, that just case.
Yeah, exactly. Ken Hagan joining us here. So you said two and a half years. Is that even possible in this situation? Because people are saying, oh, not till 2030. No way.
The goal is 2029. I can tell you that in my conversation with with the new ownership group, their their financial models are for 29 and 30. The goal would be for 29. We, we have time to to meet that timeline, but don't have the luxury of a significant amount of time.
Right.
But certainly, I guess we have the benefit of of being able to hit the ground running in that we have the model that we that we utilized before. So we dust that off, we start with that. But again, we had the benefit of of the sits passing. So we're in a much better place financially in order to to come to an agreement.
All right. The question I get all the time is, what about the Bucks? What about the Bucks? What do they need? How does it, how does this work in for that? And I know they haven't really come to you yet, so you don't know. There's a lot of question marks.
True. A couple of things there. We are essentially in a holding pattern right now. We are waiting for the Glazers to share with us what they're thinking as far as their renovation plans, as far as their potential development plans, which I believe there'll be an element of development with the new, with the new renovation agreement that'll come forward. The important thing about that is, is that we will, we will secure that the team remains here for decades to come. While we will also improve the revenue sharing and improve the the deal for taxpayers, I can 100% assure you of that. But unfortunately, we're still on a waiting pattern. And I know that that frustrates Eric Hart, the Sports Authority. It frustrates Rob Higgins with the Sports Commission because NFL has told us, you're not getting another Super Bowl until you have the next renovation agreement. Raymond James is a fine stadium. It has a significant shelf life left, but it does, it doesn't, we do not need a new stadium, but we do need to keep it up technologically efficient. Keep it one of the better ballparks in the country. Again, it's not an allegiance field. It's not a SoFi out in LA, but it's still a damn good.
It's a great.
And every year, Ray J gets ranked in the top five as far as facilities. And it's something that Eric Hart, the Sports Authority, is very, very proud of. End of the day, though, I'm not worried about capacity when it comes to financial capacity, when it comes to the Rays, the Bucks and the Lightning, because they're, for the most part, going to be different revenue streams. And I can also tell you that hopefully, within the next two months, we'll have the Lightning renovation agreement in front of us. We'll approve that. So that'll be one step, one box that we can check. And again, we're still so in a holding pattern for for the Buccaneers. But but I, 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 I believe that that'll, that'll come forward here relatively soon.
Yeah. Well, anything else we we that I've missed here that we need to throw out?
It's, again, it's, it's exciting. I'm very enthusiastic. I'm encouraged about the news. And hopefully, it won't take too long for the deal to be consummated and for MLB to approve the the new ownership group. I strongly believe they will, based on my conversations with with Commissioner Manfred. And then I'll be picking up the phone and we'll be getting to work.
Awesome. Awesome. Well, Ken, you know, thank you again for all your political capital that you've spent on this. And, you know, some members of the media have noted you talk a lot and we appreciate. And we appreciate you talking to us and maybe they'll mention where they heard your words in their stories. That would be nice. So thank you for coming on this show and talking to the fans and always keeping them, you know, abreast of what's going on. Your communication has been tremendous. Your work has been dogged. It's been awesome. And without you, none of this happens. None of this happens.
Very much. From the bottom of my heart, appreciate your kind words. And I've always tried to be as transparent as possible while acknowledging you cannot negotiate in public. You cannot put ourselves in a position where you're negotiating against a St. Pete or some other area. And so it's a fine line, but I I really do try my best to be as transparent. And when there are substantive updates, I try and bring it forward. And and again, like, you know, like I said earlier, keep fighting the good fight. We wouldn't be here without your efforts as well. So appreciate it, buddy.
Thanks, partner. Thank you. Keep, go to work now. Go get this thing done. It's just start. 15 years in the making. It's just starting. Go to work.
All right, buddy. Have a good one.
All right. University of South Florida, Brian Hodgson, studio. Yes. Coach, how are you?
I'm doing well. How are you?
Fantastic. It's good to see you. Yeah. So I, so I got to tell you, coach came in, he said, hey, I'm a little worried about having the Bills hat on. I said, not here, coach. We respect your, your beginnings as a fan. It's because you come from Buffalo, right? And you are a Bills fan. You love the Bucks. For a reason we're about, or about, but you grew up in Buffalo.
Yeah, I'm from Western New York, Jamestown, New York, about an hour, 15 minutes south of Buffalo. So diehard Bills fan, all in on everything Bills mafia. I will say, my second best team, not even close, is the Tampa Bay Bucks. And that was before I even showed up in Tampa. So I don't want anybody thinking that this is, I, I, and I think you know the reason.
Yeah. Well, as I've always said, one of my old colleagues, Steve Dumick, the big dog, old radio host here, may he rest in peace, used to say, if you move here, you got to be a Bucks fan. And I would say, you know what? If you grow up someplace else and your heart and your allegiance is to that team, you can't just dump them like that. Then you're inauthentic.
That's right.
And you're an authentic person. I know this already.
Yeah, loyalty is a big deal to me. And, I mean, yeah, I've been a Bills fan my whole life. As you know, some tough years. And so I can't, I can't just dump that. I'm a loyal guy. But I'm, I'm all in on the Bucks. I will be at every game that I can be at. Particularly, hopefully, maybe one in Buffalo.
Yes, yes.
But so I am going to, you know, if the Bills, if they're not playing the Bills, I'm all in on the Bucks. I can tell you that.
And the reason is?
Well, so if you go back to the 2018 draft, the Bucks are the reason why the Buffalo Bills have Josh Allen.
That's right.
We traded our 12th pick. We traded up with the Bucks, got their seventh pick so we could acquire Josh Allen. And I, I think it, I think it worked out for everybody, if I'm not.
Yeah, we got Vita Vea. Well, that's just fine. Couple of second round picks. Yeah.
Yeah. So and you know what? The Bucks have been pretty good since also. So I think it worked for everybody.
Yeah, we weren't in the market for a quarterback at that particular time. So we're, we're still working on the Javis experiment, but that's on us.
Yeah.
That's on us. Well, Coach, it's so glad to have you in studio and you have been a busy man.
Yeah.
Dude, this entire roster is, you have two holdovers from last year USF team. And this is, this is modern college basketball, right? It's turnover every year with the transfer portal. Everybody's going to go. And your class that you brought in is ranked 29th in the nation. This is the highest ranked class USF has, I think, ever had. So let's just get right into it. Tell me a little bit about this team. What, where are the, where are we going to see?
You know, those rankings and and at the end of the day, it means nothing, right? We got to produce, but it's great for our fan base, et cetera. But those rankings don't factor in our Division Two transfer, because they don't, they don't factor that.
And this kid's a hell of a point guard.
And he's, he's got a shot to be really, really good. He's a worker, player of the year, defensive player of the year in his league, and that's Wes Ennis. So he's not factored into that.
Wow.
And then our Canadian that went to high school in Canada is not factored into some of those rankings because they only rank kids that go to high school in the United States.
Well, that's weird.
Websites. So I'd put our class up there with pretty much anybody in the country. More importantly, we have great young men. And so we, we've got a class that's made up of five freshmen, two guys from from this team last year and and CJ and you know, obviously, we had to go out and bring the rest in from the transfer portal. But we're really, really excited about the group. We're in week four of practice and I couldn't be happier with the way things are going.
And I, one of the things we've, we've always said about USF is if they can recruit locally and keep the good players here, that would be huge. Not since my good buddy David Zimroth was was recruiting here, have we really been able to do that. And you've got Caleb Sanders coming in from North Tampa Christian. And he, from what I hear, he's one hell of a player. He's also got some, some other, there's also some other players up there that you might be knocking on the door of as well, right?
Yeah, Caleb's been phenomenal. He's had a wonderful summary. Doesn't, doesn't practice like a freshman. I can tell you that. Right before he he committed to us, he had three SEC teams, two ACC teams come in and offer.
How about that? So you beat the ACC and the SEC for this local kid.
Yeah.
See, it can be done, folks. It can be done.
Yeah, specifically, well, sort of state offered the week before.
Killing my nose.
Ole Miss off. Ole Miss offered the week before we got him. Mississippi State offered the week before we got him. Um, and so we're excited about that. And, and you're right here locally, uh, over, I can't say names per NCAA rules, but here locally, there's some talent here and that's two, three classes that we're going to do our best to, to keep home.
What's your plan for that? What's your plan for putting the fence around Tampa Bay?
Yeah. I think the first thing is you gotta build strong relationships, right? And, and you just can't expect them to want to stay home because they're from here. That, that's not realistic. So we, we're going to take pride in working harder than other people, uh, in, in that process. But also, uh, providing them with a brand of basketball that they're excited about staying home and playing and being a part of. Um, and so we'll get a, a chance to showcase that this year. We're going to probably play more like the NBA, I would say than, uh, most South Florida fans are used to. We're going to get up and down, shoot a lot of threes, attack the rim and transition. And it's exciting brand of basketball. Um, I've coached 15 guys that have gone on to play in the NBA. So obviously we sell that in recruiting.
Nice.
From a development piece. Um, and we want to be all encompassing to the point where they feel like they can stay home and they're not leaving anything on the table.
Yeah, that's exciting. That's exciting. Well, let's talk about a little bit more about your players. You brought in a, a six foot 10 young man from, uh, from Arkansas State where you were. Tell me a little bit about him.
When I, uh, when I got to Arkansas State, I guess almost three years ago now, uh, he could barely walk and chew gum. He was hiding behind the basket during conditioning drills, uh huh. But he, he has grown to be one of the best forwards in college basketball. And I'll argue that with anybody. He had a, he had a 30 and 20 game last year in conference play. Did that in less than 30 minutes and 11 of those 20 rebounds were offensive rebounds.
Nice.
You go back and look.
It's a lost art.
Yeah.
It's a lost art.
And, and if you go back and look what he did last year, um, against North Texas, obviously in this league, uh, you know, he, he double, double and was dominant. He could have gone anywhere in the country when he hit the transfer portal. He's a very loyal young man and decided to come, uh, here with me. Uh, it wasn't a tough sell. Once he saw what, what we have and saw campus and our facilities in the city of Tampa. And, um, so really excited to, to have him. I think he'll be one of the best players in the American.
All right. Let's, let's have a little fun with this. Okay. Let's pretend, um, I'm a really good two guard from South Broward High School. Part of this is actually true. Three point specialist, can't jump that good, but I, but I'm a, I'm a dogged defensive player. I'm a four star. Let's now we're really fantasy. What? I got some SEC teams looking at me. Give me the pitch. What's the pitch for USF?
So first and foremost, we're going to, we're going to talk about our style of play. The pay, and, and really it's, it's tough to answer if, if I don't know the team specifically. Here's why. We, we do a very analytical approach into our, into our recruiting. And so we're going to take those other four or five teams that you're looking at. We're going to break them down by the numbers and show you where we have an advantage. Not just in, in the way we play, but the way we develop and how it translates to the NBA. Uh, so that's first and foremost. And most of our kids that joined us this off season made a decision based on that. We probably are more in-depth analytically and more invested into their player development than anybody else in the country. I'm not going to share our secrets here, but
No, don't do that.
We give them a presentation when they come on campus for a visit that they just can't get anywhere else in college basketball.
Can you give me, take us a little behind the curtain?
Yeah, we give them a, we give them a very detailed shot, uh, shot type report. Uh, let's say they're a transfer. We're, we'll, we'll go back to your scenario, your high school kid. We take every shot you took last year in your high school season and we break it down into the, the, honestly, all the way down to whether you took off on your left foot, your right foot, uh, where you're at on the floor. Whether you touched the paint, whether you didn't touch the paint, whether you were moving right to left versus left to right. And we show you where your deficiencies are. Every shot you took on that entire season is on that sheet. It's hours and hours of.
How do you do that?
Uh, I've got a, I've got guys that work for me that are a lot smarter than me.
So they go through the, all the highlights?
It's not highlights. We, 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 we go through.
There's, there's data on this?
Pull the data. If we're missing data, we'll go through the film and, and stat it ourselves. And so other, other programs talk player development.
Yeah.
We, we try to remove any human error and, and we want to show you numbers and say, listen, this is where you gotta get better. This is over 25 games. Okay. 25 games worth of data. Nothing's a coincidence, right? So if you shot 18% going left to right, but when you were going right to left, you were a 42% three-point shooter. We really need to get in and work on this left to right.
Yeah.
Right? And that's the stuff the NBA is doing. Um, our business.
Fascinating.
Yeah. It's, it's a copycat business, right? They don't have to worry about fundraising and, um, and, and academics.
We'll get to that.
All, all, all the things that come with college basketball, which I, I love, but it, why would we not copy the NBA?
Yeah.
The guys that just get to focus on basketball all day.
Right.
And so we've had, again, I've coached 15 young men that have been able to put that jersey on, four lottery picks, six first round draft picks. And, um, and so we use that, uh, in our recruiting approach.
Go ahead. Name drop them. Go ahead.
Brandon Miller, Brandon Miller was the number two pick, um, and in the draft in 2023. He's entering his third season in NBA, number two overall pick. I signed him at Alabama. Herb Jones just signed a hundred million dollar contract with the Norman Pelicans. One of my favorite stories of all time. Herb was not on any mock draft boards, was not a top 100 kid. When we inherited him at Alabama, he was a power forward. When he left us, he was a six' point guard.
That's player development.
Yeah, yeah.
Wow.
Keon Ellis is starting every game for the Sacramento Kings and, uh, this coming off season, uh, is, is on the table for a massive contract. Josh Primo was a lottery pick. Kyra Lewis was a lottery pick. Uh, JD Davison won a ring with the Boston Celtics, uh, was the MVP of the G League last year. Alex Reese is on a contract with the Philadelphia 76ers. Uh, I had Jonathan Williams with the Houston Rockets last year. The list, the list goes on. We had 12 guys in NBA summer league last year that I coached eight this summer that I've coached. So.
And I'm guessing you're using all these guys for recruiting when you can.
Yeah.
As, as.
We're so of an exam, as an example, we're not allowed to put them on the phone with the young men, but we show them, hey, this is, this is what we did. Here's the best part. People want to visit Tampa. So half these guys have been in our gym already.
Really?
I mean, they, they have, they, you know, people want to come to Tampa. So
Of course they do.
Herb Jones was down here a couple of weeks ago. He was in our gym, uh, getting a workout in. Um, Keon Ellis will be up here next week. Brandon Miller, most likely will be here in August. You know, Tampa's a place people want to hang out, right? Very fortunate. And so our guys will get to see those guys on a regular basis. And, um, it's really, really fun to follow their careers. But, um, you know, I, I, I'm not taking all the credit for how those guys got to where they are. Uh, but I do think the way that we played at Alabama, uh, definitely helped propel, you know, propel them in that, in that process.
Ryan Hodgson is our guest, new, uh, USF men's basketball coach. Uh, it's got 13 new, uh, guys coming into the team. It'll be a whole new team. That, that's a fascinating story. I'm glad I asked that question and you got that answer. Cause I can imagine, uh, by the way, you, I'm signing. That whole pitch you just made, I'm in. I got it. And I do need to work on my left though.
And he didn't ask for any, any NIL money. We're in business.
I know my worth.
Better check his eligibility first.
Yes. Hey, I'm going to bring the team GPA up. That's about, I do know that. I do know that. It's about the, but the best thing I could give you. All right. Tell me a little bit more about some of the players that are going to round out this team. We talked about the point guard and.
Yeah. So, uh, Joe Pinyan, another guy that I brought with me, former top 100 recruit. Started his career at the University of Arkansas and then came to play with us, uh, last year at Arkansas State University. And to give a, an easy comp for our fan base, we played Memphis last year. They were 18th in the country, I believe. We went in, in, in pop Memphis at Memphis and he had 25 points in that game.
Wow.
So one, one of the best shooters I've ever been around, six, five.
Memphis had a good squad last year.
Yeah.
I've, that's, uh, I was sitting on the court side with my, my good friend, uh, Clay, who's a big, uh, booster. I'll introduce you to him. He loves USF basketball. It's right there on the floor. Um, one of my good buddies, uh, he loved, he just like, can I come in and meet Coach Hodgson? I said, oh, well, we'll get that done.
Bring him on in.
We'll get that done. We'll get that done at, at some point. So.
So we got Joe.
Yeah.
Again, I mentioned Wes Ennis, division two, probably the best player to leave division two this year to, to give some perspective. Wes was the player of the year and defensive player of the year, uh, in his conference. Uh, the second best player on his team signed at Auburn. Um, wow. To, to put things in perspective a little bit. You know, from there, we've got, uh, Devin Hayde from Central Connecticut State. An all NEC guy, a big six, five athletic wing, 25 years old, phenomenal story. I'll let him tell someday, but didn't get recruited out of high school. Was working a, a third shift job, uh, and then, and then what tried out and made a junior college team and, and the rest is history.
And now he's playing. That's, that's awesome. What year is he?
He, he's a, well, the rules have changed. Senior, but maybe a junior. We have him, we have him at least for one, but possibly for two.
Nice.
Cause he can get that junior college year back. We've got, uh, Josh Imojafo, who had 22 points, uh, against Alabama in the first round of the NCAA tournament. A transfer from Roger, Robert Morris, another six, five wing. You're going to see a common.
Yeah, yeah.
We've got, uh, Damian Collins, uh, former top 20 recruit in the country. Uh, started his career out of Kentucky, uh, a six, 10. Elite athlete, shot blocker, um, four or five from LSU, transfer from LSU. Uh, who, who I think has got a chance to be one of the better players, uh, in, in the American. We've got our three Canadians who, uh, for anybody that hasn't seen, uh, were just participating in the FIBA under 19 world cup, which was over in Switzerland. And they actually made the trip to go watch them. And, uh, they, so basically every, you know, all the countries take the 12 best players from their country. The Canadians lost to Team USA, who eventually won the entire thing. 12 best players under 19 from the United States. Canadians lost by six, if I'm not mistaken, six or eight. It was a one possession game with about three minutes to go. Uh, for a bulk of that game, our guys were the best players on the floor.
Damn. And this is the best the USA has.
Yeah.
Wow.
Adrian Niorha had 16 points and six assists, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, Onyx, Onyx Nani, another six, a six, nine freshman, uh, had, I believe eight points, eight rebounds, three blocks. Tristan Beckford had 18 points and eight rebounds against Team USA. And it feels a little un-American, but I felt like they kind of got the short end of the stick. The USA shot, Team USA shot 47 free throws. The Canadians shot 20. Lost by six. So a little disparity there.
Yeah. 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 That's all right. You can say that.
Yeah. So I, I mean, I'm going to root for my guys, right?
Absolutely. We talk about loyalty, right? Your guys.
And we've got four Canadians on the team. So, and I, I've had a long history.
Well, they're Bulls now.
They are Bulls.
So that's, that's what's most important.
Got a long history of recruiting Canada. So you'll see that as a common theme with us. I've had, uh, a lottery pick played versus Alabama. I recruit Toronto pretty heavily. Some strong relationships there. Caleb Sanders, you mentioned from, from right here locally, who's phenomenal, top 150 player in the country. Gavin Tower, High Tower, uh, top 150 player in the country from Sierra Canyon High School in Los Angeles, uh, a little point guard that we've got.
How are you going to keep all these kids happy? You got a lot of, a lot of talent here.
We do.
And how, how deep do you typically go on your bench? What's your rotation?
Probably be 11 in the non-con.
Yeah.
By the time we get to the, the harder conference play, we're usually down to nine.
Yeah.
Somewhere in there. So, uh, Deontay Green is, is coming back from last year's team, but he's going to be out this year with an Achilles that happened last season. So we have 14 guys. We'll play 11 early, uh, play nine down the stretch and there's a good chance, maybe we redshirt a couple of freshmen. You, you, you never know how things will stack up because they've been so good, uh, here early. But we, we've got it. We've got a great group. I'm, I'm excited about.
Brian Hodgson joining us here, USF men's basketball coach, uh, in his first hundred days recruited the top 30 class, 29 class, maybe even, well, it's got to be higher than that with the guys that weren't, weren't counted into, into this. So tell me, what's the transition been like for you? What was, what was, what was it about South Florida that, that you loved USF?
Yeah. But before we get there real quick, I don't want to leave this out. We, we get so caught up talking about the new guys. We said CJ Brown has been phenomenal.
One of your holdovers. Yeah.
Our, our offense and CJ is a perfect marriage. Uh, got a chance to, to put college basketball on notice this year. And, and more importantly, and where it just ties into your question, CJ could have gone anywhere.
Yeah. He was in the portal.
Was in the portal, could have gone anywhere. He, he chose to stay here in South Florida. And we had a, we had a quick conversation in, in, you know, about a, for about a week. And so I'd like to think that I have a very small part in that. But more importantly, this community, the university, our athletic department, our fan base had the biggest part in that. He wanted to stay here and that says a lot about this place, which, excuse me, leads to what you just asked. I fell in love with this, with this, this opportunity. Um, had several opportunities this off season. As I went through the interview process and, uh, spoke to the leadership that we have here in place at the University of South Florida. You know, obviously Michael Kelly's not here anymore, but started with Michael Kelly and Lee Butler. And I was, excuse me, was all in. Uh, and then I was fortunate enough to, to, to get to have conversations with, uh, President Law. Chairman of the board, William Weatherford, Vice Chairman Mike Griffin, CEO of the foundation, Jay Strowman. And alignment was something I was really looking for. I've been around the block now. I've seen what it looks like. I've seen what athletic departments look like when they don't have it. This place has it. Um, you got a bunch of, uh, people that are highly invested in, into one common goal. Uh, and that's to improve the University of South Florida's athletic department and the university as a whole, and, and to make Tampa proud. And, um, that, their vision, their enthusiasm, I fell in love with the slogan Tampa Bay's home for hoops. I think that's great. We got hockey. We've got baseball. We've got football.
Yeah.
If I'm not mistaken, all three have won their respective championships in the last five years.
Yeah.
Right? So that's unheard of. So now we're, we're going to bring the basketball.
Yeah. The Rays have gotten close, but they got to the World Series and didn't win it, but.
I'm sorry, went in the last five years. Yes, went, excuse.
Well, with the new owners, we're, we're going to get there.
Yeah, we're going to get, I'm all in on the Rays, by the way. I have no real true baseball loyalty. So I am all in on the Rays.
Fantastic. Yeah. I can't be a Blue Jay fan.
No, 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 I'm not a Blue Jay fan. Closest, yeah, that would have been the closest team outside of that. You're looking at Pittsburgh and Cleveland.
No, no.
Gross.
Yeah. My grandfather, my, my dad and my grandparents are from Pittsburgh. So I was kind of there, kind of the Braves growing up. I mean, they.
Yeah, yeah. We all were there. Yeah.
I mean, small, I mean, that was, that was unbelievable baseball.
Smoltz, Smoltz was on the show Friday.
Was he really?
Yeah. He's in front of the program.
Okay.
You'll meet him. You'll meet him. He loves soup. You know, you might, you would have recruited John Smoltz. He was a hell of a basketball player.
Really?
Yeah. In Michigan. Yeah.
I like that.
Yeah. Multi-sport athlete.
I was all in on Smoltz, man. And they were on TV every night, right? I watched the Braves all the time. Chipper Jones, that, that whole crew. Um, and, and so long story short, I, I wanted to be a part of being behind the face of basketball for, for such a great city like Tampa.
Yeah.
I, I had, I've argued this with anybody that'll listen. Where, where in the country is better to live than Tampa, Florida?
There isn't. This is it. I argue that all the time.
Ready to argue if anybody wants. I mean, I used to, you can talk about some other places like Charleston and San Diego, places I love to go visit.
Yeah.
They're not Tampa.
No, we have it all.
We, we, we do.
We got the weather. We got the beaches. We've got the major sports. We've got major entertainment. And as, as something you've probably already figured out, the people are different here.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not Miami. It's not all the show and the glitz and the glamour. You know, these are grounded people, very much a blue collar. Very, I mean, very much like Buffalo, I think, without, without the freezing cold.
I like to say that, yeah, without the cold. Yeah. I like to say this now, don't just, we're not going to just blast Buffalo. If you were in Buffalo right now in the summertime, you wouldn't leave.
No, I said the, the people are awesome. I love Bills mafia. You've jumped through a table. You told me this.
I've been through tables.
We love, we love that. We love the people up there. Absolutely. They're not Philadelphia. That's for sure.
I was at a game against Indianapolis Colts with Peyton Manning, where I couldn't see the fans on the other side of the stadium from my seats because the snow, um, which was awesome.
Which you don't have to worry about here.
I, I, so, so back to Tampa and how great it was a city. My only complaint is, and I may get blasted for this. I, I think we need some, uh, we need some driving courses, um, to be taken here in Tampa.
That is a very popular opinion.
Those are transplants though.
I mean, I don't know where they're from, but, uh, it's, it's, I mean, it is a lot. You gotta have a head on your, on a swivel.
Yeah.
Driving around Tampa.
It's, it's, it's brutal, bro.
Transplants.
That's a very popular opinion. Yeah.
Ohio transplants. That makes a lot of sense. I.
A lot of people that, uh, don't know the rules of the road here that were probably just, just came here recently and somebody threw them up, uh, a, a set of keys and said, yeah, go ahead and drive the car.
I think someone told them that, hey, here in Tampa, we don't have to use turn signals. I think that's, I think that's what.
Drives me crazy.
What, what happened. But I love it. We, we've, uh, my family and I, we've settled in, in here in South Tampa.
Beautiful.
Man, what a cool place to live.
Yeah.
We love every second of it. You get, uh, you, you get the big city slash small town feel at the same time.
You got it. Yeah. You, you figured it out.
15 minutes from everything, man. It's great.
Yeah. It is a wonderful place to live, but you know, I'm a, I come from Florida State. Yeah, it is a wonderful place to live, but you know, I'm a, I come from a Florida State background. Um, in fact, I, when we first got into the A C C, I was a basketball analyst on the radio network, working with the great Gene Deckerhoff. So I got to tour the A C C, you know, and the, after shooter, after shootarounds, we, you know, we'd run, uh, Cameron Indoor, the Dean Dome, all the places, all these great places, Tobacco Road. It was, it was a dream come true for a, for a hoops junkie like me. But if there's one thing that's missing in Tampa, it's big time hoops. And we've just never. And you know, Amir gave us a taste a couple of years ago. And, uh, when F A U came here, that place was freaking jumping. The line was around the building. Um, the Yingling Center had, it had a feel to it like I've never, I'm getting chills just thinking about it. It had a feel to it and a vibe to it that I've never seen in U S F. Back in early, they, they, you know, they were top 25 under Seth for a little bit. That, we had it going a little bit, but that, that was a different type of deal. And, uh, I'm like, man, we need this. We need this like on a everyday, every year basis. And we're hoping to God that you can bring that vibe back. And it sounds like you're well on your way.
Yeah, it's, it's one of the reasons again, why, why I wanted to be here and, and turn down other opportunities to be here. And I won't name the other schools, but some of these other schools were places that other people would think, well, why, why wouldn't you take that? Why would you go to, I get the question on the road all the time. And I, I love telling people why.
Yeah.
Uh, but Coach Amir set the tone and showed people how special this place was. Um, and, and so this is not a rebuild. I, I get the opportunity to build on a foundation that he laid. Um, and I, and I couldn't be more proud, uh, to be able to follow him and, and what he did because he's one of the best human beings I've ever met in my life. And so, um, very, very fortunate to have this opportunity. Um, and, and, you know, again, he, he was really able to show how special this place, he did it right away.
Yeah.
I, I mean, won, won the league in year one and, um, and so just, just thrilled to be here and, and build on, uh, that, that foundation. I think I take pride at Arkansas State. We went from, uh, second or lowest, second lowest or lowest attendance in the league when I took the job over. It's last year, we were number one in the league in attendance. We went from about averaging around 1,000 fans per game to about 7,500.
Wow.
Um, and so we're going to do that here. We're going to get in the community. We're going to get out on campus, uh, all the things Coach Amir did a phenomenal job at. You want to talk about engaging the student body?
Yeah, yeah.
They, they, they loved coaching for good reason and, and we're going to follow that lead and, uh, and, and make sure we've got one of the best home court environments in college basketball.
Yeah, you know, Brian, I wanted to get into that a little bit real quick. We've talked about your players quite a bit. Let's talk about you a little bit. You, you turned around an Arkansas State team in two, literally two years. Back-to-back 21, uh, 21 seasons, 25 wins last year. You took them to the postseason for the first time since most of our listeners have been alive in 1999. Um, where, where did you get your basketball brain? Like what, what do you credit to, to your knowledge and, and your ability to turn a program around like that, that was literally just sort of bobbing up and down, ready to sink?
Yeah, first, first and foremost, I, I've got the best staff in the country and I'm very fortunate. They all came here with me. Um, I, I, I can't stand the head coaches that sit up here in, in the media and me, 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 me. I've got the best assistants and support staff in the country. Um, they're all a lot smarter than me. Um, and so that plays a huge part in it. Uh, we take pride in not working people. But I also got to give, uh, a ton of credit to, to Nate Oats, head coach at University of Alabama, my mentor. Uh, worked for him for eight, eight years, four years at the University of Buffalo, four years at Alabama. Uh, we, we took over a program at Alabama that hadn't won anything in a long time. And we won four S E C championships in four years.
How about that?
Um, put 12 players in the N B A in four years, four first-round draft picks. Um, he is probably the best mind in college basketball. You look at a, a program six years ago, was anybody talking about Alabama basketball?
No, no.
Off a back-to-back Final Four, Elite Eight, uh, S E C championship, number one overall seed the year before that. And so I thought I knew basketball when I went to work for Nate as a young 26-year-old assistant at the University of Buffalo. I had no idea and I learned so much, uh, under, under Coach Oats. And, um, we emulate a lot that they do and put my own spin on, on, on those things and, and we've had a lot of success with it.
That's awesome. Um, all right, last thing for me. What do you need from us? You said getting out in the community and, and, and I've been on this for a long, long time. We need to be better as a fan base. Not only for our Rays, Bucks, uh, Lightning, um, we got great fans here. I just think we need to be better for U S F. Um, and so what do you, what do you need from us in terms of money, support? What, what can we do?
Yeah, so we're, it's, it's such a great job. We, we don't have to go out and necessarily beat the streets, which I've had to do at some other places. We, we've got great resources, but, um, obviously college athletics, right? It's part of the deal. So we are, we're hosting a golf tournament on August 25th. Um, it's kind of going to be our one men's basketball specific fundraiser for the year. Um, and, and it's more so, it, it's not necessarily about raising funds. We don't have this crazy need right now that we just got to go get, get money. It's, we want to tap into the community, right? And so we're looking for whole sponsors. Uh, we're looking for anybody that wants to put a foursome in. It's, it's going to be at T P C Tampa on August 25th. Um, and, uh, I'll, the, the link is all over our social media. Um, and so if you want to.
We'll fill it up.
Yeah, if you're interested in, in, in signing up as a sponsor or, uh, of, you know, putting a foursome in, I'll tell you this. I, I'm not, I don't want to say now, but we're going to have some great celebrity appearances at the golf tournament.
Nice.
B, you're going to, the T gifts are going to, are going to, probably the best T gifts you'll get at any golf tournament around here.
Yeah, it's fantastic.
There's going to be some exclusive stuff that the only time you're able to get this gear is at our golf tournament once a year.
And so this is from your golf tournament.
Okay.
Of years past.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're taking, yeah, we're taking it up a, a notch.
Yeah.
And so there's going to.
He ain't lying, by the way. They know what they're doing.
We're, we're, we've got some, some stuff in the works that like, if you're not there, there's definitely going to be a little fear of missing out.
Oh, little FOMO.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, all right, we've been doing it at Arkansas State the last two years. We've had a blast. We're only taking 22 teams. We're about half full right now. So.
Oh, that's going to go fast.
So we want to, want to get this thing filled up and, and hit the sponsorships and get those filled up. Um, but all the players will be there on every tee box, the whole coaching staff, along with, uh, some local Tampa, uh, celebrities, uh, sports figures and, and even some from across the country.
Awesome. Well, Coach, I really appreciate you taking the time to come in here. You're welcome anytime. If you're just running around, getting a workout in, pop in. We'll just talk some hoops. Yeah, we got so much more to talk about it, but we're, we're here for you. We're going to promote this program. We're going to promote your golf tournament every day. So we get it full up, so, uh, keep me posted.
Can I get one thing I want?
Do whatever you want.
I want to know.
It's your show.
They can, they can tag me on social media. I want to know what the best Bills backers bar is in Tampa.
I already know, Riveters.
It is?
The official sports bar of the J P Peterson Show.
Really?
Yes, yes. Bills mafia.
Bills mafia, yep.
I'm pretty, I'm pretty, I'll have to double check.
Okay.
But if it's not that, it, it may be the patio. I want to see that, but I, I know.
Also now, shameless plug, Duff, Duff's Chicken Wings is now Tampa.
Yeah, yeah.
And so, uh, if you haven't, that, that's true Buffalo Chicken Wings, but I'm sure people will be going there for the game. But yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm going to be in, I'm going to be somewhere on Sundays watching my Bills.
Yeah, well, I'm going to drag you over to Riveters and try their chicken wings too. We'll do a little video. You can, you, since you're an expert, we'll do a little video.
I want to follow.
How they rank.
I just want to hang with you for a week and I followed your social media from this last weekend. That looks like my kind of weekend. I saw some boat action, saw a little country club pool action, got the dog in the water. So I just book a weekend with, you know.
This is why I do what I do.
Yeah.
My, my, my lovely wife, who's from upstate New York, is already chiming in and she said, uh, Tampa is not upstate, lol. I'm like, yeah, well, not, no, our weather's way better, but the people are similar, I think.
Yeah, they are.
I think are good, good.
Hardworking people.
Blue collar people, yeah.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Where's your wife from?
Uh, she's from Rochester area.